How's it going today, Grace? He was walking.
Yeah, and uh, Jason Paul.
What about the greens? Or the better one? You think they come back this year? I can't give you that right now. But I, hey, but I hope, I hope your team thinks, I mean, I hope they make change. Maybe it's just my, I can't say improve. But you've got some proof. But I guess you won't do that right now.
Let's go ahead and call the meeting over. Uh, if you would, please stand for prayer and your man standing will be playing the lead. Your grace has said, Father, we thank you this day and all we may bless. We thank you once again for allowing us as a board to command and pray that we make all decisions in accordance with our people. We pray for our country, especially the men and women that serve and form soldiers, bring them back home safe and sound. Pray for the families that have lost loved ones, come to them on the you know how. We pray, Lord, that you forgive us of our sins. Christ, I pray. Amen. Chief Etheridge, can you do this?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alderman Clef.
Here.
Alderman Cover.
Here.
Alderman Dale.
Present.
Vice Mayor Watson.
Present.
Alderman.
Here.
Alderman Speck.
Everyone, everyone is here other than Alderman Speck. So we need a motion to approve the minutes of last minute's meeting.
Motion approved.
Motion by Vice Mayor Ken Dotson, is there a second?
It's a fair.
Second by Alderman Dale. Any discussion? All four of the motion, let it know we're saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, left side? Motion passed. Uh, additions or deletions to the agenda? Uh, I do have a couple items that came in late. Uh, I'm proposing for item number five, uh, to, to, to discuss, uh, police cars, purchase of police cars is item number five. Uh, item, also item number six, uh, is garbage can areas and storage containers, uh, that we'll be discussing. Uh, does anyone have anything else to add or delete when you're done? Okay. Here and none, uh, someone make a motion to add these. Did you tell me those? Motion made by Alderman Coleman, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Dotson, any discussion? All four of the motion, let it know we're saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, left side? Motion passed. Item number five, uh, will be police cars presented by Chief Etheridge. Uh, item number six will be, uh, talking about the garbage can areas and storage containers. All right. Uh, we have, uh, item number one, their old business, we have no old business, we'll go straight into new business. Item number one, downtown revitalization, uh, Mr. Ray Evans. We got him on audio, we can't get him on video for some reason, I think. Ray, are you there?
Yes, sir, I am, and I'm not sure whether that's a blessing or a curse.
Okay.
Second, uh, we have items that is, discussed with you tonight, two of those are related to expenditures out of the downtown fund. Uh, and I would tell you that, uh, in full disclosure, that the, uh, the board has not had an opportunity to meet and formally approve either of these expenditures. But I have all of the members today, and of the seven members responding, all responded positively to the, uh, the two expenditure items that I will discuss with you, uh, here shortly. Uh, the first of it, owes being the light in Livingston series for the summer. Uh, the mayor's been able to, uh, negotiate, uh, what I believe to be, uh, three outstanding, uh, uh, entertainment, entertainment groups for that series of summer. Uh, the first being Colin Ray, uh, the second being Confederate Railroad, and the third being Kentucky Headhorns. And, uh, uh, the, uh, the combined fee for those three groups is thirty thousand dollars. We are recommending an additional ten thousand dollars for marketing of this latest expenditure for a total of forty thousand dollars to come out of the, uh, uh, the downtown, uh, fund. And checking with Ms. Phyllis today, uh, that fund has a, uh, a balance of about two hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars and change. Uh, so we obviously have some other obligations to that, our loan repayment and the three, uh, um, facade improvement grants that, uh, that we have worked at. Uh, the, uh, we recommend that the board approve up to forty thousand dollars for the light in Livingston, uh, series of summer and fall. Uh, with that, Mayor, I would ask for a, uh, a vote for approval.
Okay. Okay, is there a, uh, motion, uh, to accept, uh, this, uh, release the funds out of the R C for summer concert series? Motion made by Alderman Dale, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Clough, any discussion? Roll call vote, Ms. Phyllis.
Alderman Langford.
Yes.
Alderman Clef.
Yes.
Alderman Cover.
Yes.
Alderman Dale.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson.
Yes.
Motion passed, go ahead with your other item, Ray.
Next, next item is, uh, is the Livingston Academy prom on the square. Uh, the, uh, the committee did meet, uh, uh, earlier last year and, uh, did in fact endorse the concept of having the Livingston Academy prom on the square itself. Again, we have since the, the particulars of that event have come up very recently, the board has not had an occasion to, to meet and discuss. But again, we had, uh, uh, seven of the eight committee members respond, uh, with strong support for an expenditure of up to ten thousand dollars in support of the, uh, uh, the prom on the square. Uh, some of this will be one-time expenses just for this particular event. But, uh, there is a portion of it, which is about fifty percent, that is actually for some, what I would call some festive event lighting that can be used for, or, uh, other events throughout the, the years on the square itself. Uh, so I would, uh, again recommend to Board Mayor Alderman, an expenditure of up to ten thousand dollars in support of the prom on the square.
Thank you. Okay, uh, is there, do I hear a motion?
Tell me.
Motion made by Alderman Coleman, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, we got a second by Vice Mayor Dotson, any discussion? Roll call vote, Ms. Phyllis.
Alderman Clef.
Yes.
Alderman Cover.
Yes.
Alderman Dale.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson.
Yes.
Alderman Langford.
Yes.
Motion passed, also I just wanted to add too, that I, I read an article today that, uh, that eighty employees, city employees would be working on prom, and that's just absolutely untrue. There would be about eight to ten employees working, uh, to, uh, install lights and, uh, tear down, that's it, that's, that's all the employees. I think, uh, that's quoted, uh, I just want to, thank you. Go ahead, Ray.
So, uh, Mayor, and Board Members, the third item is the, uh, an update on the facade improvement, uh, improvement grant program. Uh, if you have noticed, one oh three East Port Square, or two oh nine, and two oh seven South Turp Street. You can, uh, you can visually see what a phenomenal, uh, impact the, this grant program has had on these three, uh, uh, properties, uh, could be in private, uh, of the property owners in how they have, uh, improved the facades of, of those three facilities. Uh, and, uh, looking forward to the completion of those. Uh, if you haven't had the opportunity to drive down South Turp Street to look at what, uh, uh, Floyd Krader and walkers have done at, uh, two oh seven and two oh five. You need to do that, that is just a phenomenal, uh, 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 change in, in those two storefronts. Uh, and, and the call that, in each case, we awarded up to twelve thousand five hundred dollars again out of the downtown fund, uh, for, uh, those improvements. And it's a, a reversible, uh, uh, grant where they actually submit invoices to us, uh, and, and, uh, we approve up to fifty percent of the, uh, the expenditures, up to twelve thou- thousand five hundred dollars each. Fourth thing is an update on the Main Street and Broad Street sidewalk improvements project. Uh, all I can tell you is a slow, uh, process at T doc. Uh, our consultant has submitted, uh, all the construction documents, all the right-of-way documents, uh, to T doc, and T doc is still in, it's still in review of those. Uh, and may I make it with your help, I'm gonna reach out to some folks at T doc to see if we can determine, uh, why it seems to be taking so very long to, uh, to get, uh, review in concurrence of, of that project. Uh, lastly, uh, our courthouse, uh, grounds courthouse plaza project update, uh, that seems to be going well, thinking smoothly. I, we're actually getting good communication back from T doc as various elements within the, uh, what's called the N E P process is being approved. Uh, there will actually be a consultant, uh, on site this coming Thursday that is an, uh, archaeological consultant. And I would, uh, I'm gonna be meeting with her, and I would, uh, certainly invite any of you to, uh, to meet with her as well. So you better understand exactly what process, uh, the, uh, archaeologist has to go through as part of the process for the, uh, improvements in courthouse grounds. Have you, Jake, any questions, if you have any?
Yeah, hey, Ray, when, uh, when was that, Thursday, at what time?
Um, well, I think it's until tomorrow.
I'm sorry.
I, I will, I will recontrol. Go ahead with you, and then you send that out there, my, uh, I believe it's until tomorrow.
All right. Uh, any questions for Mr. Evans?
I have one quick question, Mr. Evans. What is your best gas time, Ray, when that project might be let out for, um, bids?
The courthouse project or the sidewalk project?
The courthouse project.
Oh, we're probably, if it takes us long for, for the state to review and approve this project as it has taken on the sidewalk project, it could be, uh, eighteen months from now. I, I would, I would hope that it could be, uh, uh, under an old process, it would be six to eight months from now that we could get it out.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Evans? Okay, uh, good job, Ray, thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, next we have Ms. Shannon Cantrell, part of the downtown board as well.
Good evening, I wanted to let y'all know a couple things going on at the chamber. Um, just a reminder for all of you, our best practices in economic development courses this Thursday night at the chamber from five thirty to seven thirty. Some of you have already got back in touch with me, but if you have not, please let me know in the morning or after this meeting whether or not you're gonna be able to make it. Um, and we do encourage all of you to try to come if you can. And also, we will be holding some strategic planning sessions at the chamber with myself and the chamber board to discuss, you know, where we plan on taking the chamber in the next one to five years. Set some very solid goals, work toward a good mission vision statement, along with what initiatives we're gonna focus on over the course of the next five years. Just working toward a more sustainable chamber. Our growth over the course of the last two years has been rather large. So it's time for us to sit down as a group and really focus on where we're going and what we're doing. Um, those planning sessions will be held, our first one is gonna be April twenty-first from five thirty to seven thirty. Second one is May nineteenth from eleven to one thirty P M, both of these will be at the chamber. And I wanted to let y'all know, y'all are more than welcome to attend these with us if you would like to be a part of these strategic planning sessions and voice any of your, um, ideas, that'd be great. We'd love to have y'all there, and I will send out those dates to you so you can remember in case you are, um, interested in coming. That's all I have.
Okay, any questions for Ms. Cantrell? Okay, thank you, Ms. Cantrell.
You're welcome, thank y'all.
Item number two, uh, is the bids on our mosquito control product device. We had, uh, we did advertise for bid, a, uh, mosquito control, uh, device, and it came back as a, uh, U L D code aerosol generator, is the proper name of it. We had one bid, uh, for Clark at twelve thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Is that a mosquito machine?
Yes. Yeah. So I'll entertain a motion.
Put it in the back of the truck, can we drive around like we used to?
That's right.
Well, is that gonna, um, allow the city to have multiple units, or is this to replace one that's?
This is, this is to replace what we have, the one that's about half, but, uh, we still got the old one, the two right.
Yes.
So if we needed to run two, I guess we could, but, uh, this was a budget item that we, so, uh, is there a motion?
Sorry.
I guess nobody wants a mosquito bid.
Yeah.
Motion by Alderman Langford, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Clough, any discussion? All four of the motion, uh, let it know we're saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, left side? Motion passed. When we call the market, a P O. Uh, item number three, uh, we have with us today from Tennessee Association and Utility District, Mr. James Haby Griffin. Hold on, Griffin, glad you could make it, Mr. Griffin didn't know if he was gonna make it tonight, he had jury duty, is that right? Your wife had jury duty.
It was a very rough day today, I had jury duty. Uh, at three o'clock, right as I was on outside of here, I was a line, which there's my cell phone service. And, uh, she tells me that she couldn't be hung in jury duty till seven o'clock, and I got kids I gotta go pick up and everything, so, uh, I printed off some stuff for you, and I ran in, I told Mayor Hayes, I said, uh, sorry, but I've gotta go. And I got right outside of town, she called me and she said, I got free. I said, good, uh, 'cause I'm here now, so we're gonna do this thing. Uh, at the end of March, uh, we had a little meeting with Mayor Hayes and a few members of the utility staff, uh, here in Livingston to discuss the new lead copper rule. That was recently passed in December of twenty-one. Uh, and out of that rule is gonna require all utilities across the nation to do a new lead service line inventory for utilities. Uh, that would include the homeowner side as well as the, the system owner side. So we discussed the different areas of that rule, and then, uh, Mayor Hayes also asked if I would spend some time, maybe write something that we can hand out to customers. Uh, and then also be here at the board meeting to help you answer any questions. So what you have in front of you is a three-page document that I wrote up real quick. Uh, the first page of it is a kind of a simple explanation of what that rule is and why it matters to those homeowners. Uh, and really it's only highlighting what we are really requesting feedback of the homeowner on. There's many other things involved in the rule. Uh, the second page would be a, a document that the homeowner could fill out for us. Uh, I believe in the KISS method, just keep it as simple as you possibly can so that we don't have any issues along the way. Uh, and I feel like we've kind of done that there. Uh, and then the last page is just kind of a infographic that could be used to help answer any questions. Uh, Mayor Hayes wanted something that, uh, the homeowner could use and also the system could use to make sure we ask the right questions so that we get that, uh, proper information from the owner. So what the rule is actually requiring us to do is every house business, anything that serves population that was built before July nineteen eighty-eight, we have to do inventory of the system-owned side of that service line, right? So from the main to the meter, uh, and then also the customer-owned side of that service line, from the meter to the house. Uh, and we have to identify what material that line is made of. Few options, obviously, now we're building everything with pets, uh, some systems are still using copper. Uh, but those are definitely the prominent ones, but what the new lead copper rule looks at is getting the lead out of the system. Uh, and so we would have to identify every lead service line, uh, in our system. And then, uh, in October of twenty-four, uh, we will end up making a lead service line replacement plan and new sampling procedures, uh, for that, that home.
So, and, and the reason that, I, I thank you, Mr. Griffin, for being here, but, uh, one of the, the main reasons is, A, is to get awareness out. Uh, we have fifty-one hundred water customers, and all fifty-one hundred is gonna have to be contacted, uh, by our water department, or however we figure out how to do that. You can see the Q and A, uh, that, uh, all the customers are gonna be asked within our water utility district. Again, we got fifty-one hundred, and we've got to October of twenty-twenty-four to get it done, okay? So, uh, we'll be making plans, uh, to go door to door, uh, probably, uh, put some more things in, in the paper, and on the radio that, uh, city employees, uh, from the water department, or from some department. Uh, we'll be knocking on the doors, asking for this Q and A to be filled out. And, uh, is there, of course, we'd love to have a hundred percent, but, how close can we be, Jake, do we?
So the way the rule reads is anything that's not identified is classified as unknown, and unknown is gonna be classified as lead until known otherwise.
So we need a hundred percent?
We need a hundred percent.
Okay.
Uh, so, obviously, we have those issues, uh, customers don't wanna be contacted, they don't wanna participate. That is gonna, gonna happen, it's gonna happen across the nation. Uh, but the way the rule says it is, if you do not know, you're gonna assume it's the worst-case scenario, uh, which would be a lead pipe. Uh, and so we would have to test that home as if it was lead, and then after a series of that, I think the homeowner would agree to provide us with the information that they want. Because the testing procedure now, as it is wrote, which is looking at changing, uh, is gonna be a first draw sample, and then the homeowner will catch liters two, three, and four, set that to the side, and then also a fifth liter sample. So it's a lot more in-depth than what we currently do right now.
So, uh, a couple of different ways that we're gonna try to attack this, A is there a website? Uh, anyone can go, and we'll get it set up, can go on our website and fill out the Q and A. Uh, B is door to door, and, uh, not to take away from the water department, but we're probably leaning on the fire department and the city police to go door to door for us as well. Uh, to try to get the survey, uh, complete as, as quickly as possible, we're not gonna try to do it all in a month. Uh, but over the next year and a half, uh, this is what the state says we, we need to do and have to do, and it, and, uh, we need to get as many as possible because we don't want, uh, I mean, as you said, if, if, if you don't get this data, then it goes down as lead and info. I guess, who, who would be coming to your home to test, uh, you, see if you have lead in your water? Would that be T doc, or who?
It would be the system's responsibility to test.
Okay, so would be the, uh?
Like we currently do now, the testing procedures will change a little bit. Uh, and obviously, and, and the guys in water can tell you, that is probably one of the most difficult tests to, to get a system to, to complete. Uh, because it is a hundred percent reliant on customer feedback, uh, which is generally pretty tough. Uh, so, the best way, there is no, you know, in the rule, this is the exact way to do this inventory. There are all these little fingers running out that say these are your options. And so doing a multi-step approach, which is what y'all are looking at right here, where the water system does an investigation on the water side, and then we ask for feedback for the customer side, that's the best way to try to cover all of those bases. Uh, and obviously, the more work we do now, it's gonna be a little bit less headache we're gonna have down the line. Uh, and so, something just simple, like you'll see on that questionnaire, the first sign, the first question is, was your home built, uh, before July of eighty-eight? Uh, that is what the state has said is the, uh, lead-free day in July of nineteen eighty-eight, lead was banned in Tennessee. So if it was after eighty-eight, there shouldn't be any lead, so we're not gonna worry about you, you know, uh, just keep it simple.
Any questions, uh, for Mr. Griffin? Yes, go ahead, go ahead. I actually got one for you, Mr. Griffin, one for you. Um, is there any kind of shortcut method for knowing for homeowners that have bought a home that don't have a clue if their home was built before then or not? Is there some trick, shortcut method to knowing that?
There's not much.
Okay.
There's the Tennessee Property Assessor, which could have a lot of that data, but that's gonna have somebody sitting in front of a computer looking up five thousand homes. Uh, there's, there's just not a lot of shortcuts.
And then the second question is, there not room on their bills that we could put a message about this and some, okay? Yeah, I, I, I felt that there'd be a website and utility bills on the rack is what we're gonna try to, probably, yes.
Do those bills get generated from here, or is that a second, is that a vendor that does it?
No, we, we do it all again.
Okay, I've got one, a couple of questions. Little bit of confusion to me, um, because in this first paragraph it says lead and copper. So are we really just looking for lead, or what's the copper? Why is it a new ruling on copper? Is copper still allowed for?
Yeah, that's actually a very interesting catch. Uh, the current rule we operate under right now is do lead and copper. Uh, we, when we sample for lead, we sample for copper at the same time, they both have limits. The lead limits is in parts per billion, and the copper limit is in parts per million, so it's a lot more room, you know? You see advertisements all the time, coppers and everything, it's got a It's got a beneficial use, uh, in most areas of our lot. They kept the lead and copper part of the rule, but they did nothing to copper in the, in the new rule. But it is still in there and it will still be sampled and it will still be investigated, uh, along the way.
Okay, and then the second part of my question is, on the backside of all this, what kind of enforcement mechanisms are... Is, is the government gonna have for business owners or homeowners that refuse to change out their piping from the meter throughout their home or business?
That's a question we've been getting asked a lot. Uh, in the federal regulation, there's not really much to that right now. Uh, the regulation specifically says that the system is not responsible for replacing, uh, customer-side plumbing. Uh, however, if you go into the requirement to do a lead service line replacement, you don't get credit unless the customer replaces their side. You will be able to get that customer to sign an affidavit that says they understand they have a lead line and they are fine with that, which re- kinda relieves you from dealing with dealing anymore, but you still don't get the credit. Uh, Livingston's water is great. I don't think we're ever gonna exceed that where we have to start replacing lead lines in Livingston just because of the good water source and the good operations you have. Uh, but it is a problem. The other thing about it is, uh, every system has the ability to identify what a cross connection looks like in their system. And that homeowner that maybe doesn't wanna change anything could be deemed a cross connection, uh, with non-potable water and therefore would have to install a backflow converter and things like that uh, because of that lead line could come back into your system if something happened.
You heard about a lead line. Is that the same thing as a galvanized line? Is that what we're talking about?
Uh, so, there are two, uh, distinct differences. Uh, lead and galvanized were used a lot frequently, uh, during that timeframe, but they are different. The only time that galvanized matters in this new rule is if it ever is or was an outstream of a lead line.
So, they are totally different?
They are. What we could see is a homeowner with a galvanized line, but the water system had copper or, or black plastic on our side of it. And in that case, that galvanized line is still okay to stay in the ground. Uh, however, if it was a galvanized on the homeowner and the water system did have a lead service line, now that galvanized needs to be removed also. Galvanized is really bad about pitting. And so, in those pits, that lead would deposit and the federal regulation is wary that the lead would still leach out of the galvanized years down the line.
This is a question for Mr. Kennedy, but in your experience when you're, you know, repairing leads, et cetera, et cetera, do you feel like that the city of Livingston has very much... Are, are there any lead lines in our system or what's the...
I've been here eighteen years and never seen a lead line in our system.
Never seen one, okay. Okay, great.
Lead is something that we tend to have a lot more problem with in, uh, larger cities or those cities that really industrialized in like the sixties. Obviously, Flint, Michigan is a big name. But even in Tennessee, uh, areas like Memphis, we'll, we'll have a lot of that. Uh, a lot of our rural populations that have only really started seeing that growth in these last few years, I'm not expecting to see much of it at all. But that still doesn't mean we, we still have to go through this part of it. We still have to get this inventory ready.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith. Is there any, any questions, uh, we'll be, uh, working on this, but I, I, I thought that this is a good way to, to get the word out to the general public and that way board members know as well on, uh, if they see folks knocking on the doors and trying to get this information. So, thank you, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Uh, any questions for Mr. Griffith? Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much for your time today. And, uh, Mayor Hayes has my phone number. Jack's got my phone number. If any of y'all have any questions, we go through there. Just feel free to reach out to me. I'll be happy to help y'all out.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith. Item number four, uh, is Mr. Tommy Lee, upper chairman of development district.
Thank you, Mayor Hayes, and members of the board. Uh, Mayor Hayes asked me to come, uh, for you tonight to just give you an update on a couple of grants, uh, that we have submitted on behalf of the town of Livingston. Uh, well, one is one that we have submitted and one is one that we have got a notice, uh, for. Uh, the first one I'll talk about is one that we submitted a couple of weeks ago. This was a, uh, this grant was from GameStop, which is a private recreational company. And they sent out a notice of funding opportunity, uh, for the potential purchase of playground equipment. This, uh, was a first come, first sub grant. And so, when it came out, I reached out to Mayor Hayes, asked if the city would be interested. And, uh, according to the grant, uh, opportunity, um, the city could apply for up to fifty thousand dollars for the pur- toward the purchase of new playground equipment. There were several different options that were available. Uh, and, and, and the playground equipment is, are these large apparatuses ranging in size and features. Uh, the one that the city said that they would be interested in is, is a pretty large, uh, apparatus with swings and slides and climbing, you know, mechanisms for, for children. And, uh, and so, with Mayor Hayes' blessing, I, I applied, uh, or Matt Billings applied on behalf of the city. And, and basically, how it works is in a couple of weeks, uh, GameStop will reach out to us and let us know what level of grant that the city would be eligible for. And then, based upon that, the city can then determine whether or not they want to proceed and purchase the playground equipment. So, we're, we're in no way, or the city's in no way under any kind of financial obligation. It'll just be a decision that needs to be made, uh, once the, uh, once the award is rolled out. And so, it can, like I said, it can be up to fifty thousand dollars, but it could be, it could be less than that. And so, uh, at that point, when they let us know, we can, we can make a decision whether or not we wanna move forward or not. So, any questions on that particular application? And then, the final thing is, uh, a little bit of good news. Uh, back in December, uh, Mr. Matt Billings, once again, submitted, uh, an Appalachian Regional Commission grant on behalf of the city. And this was a five-hundred-thousand-dollar grant to, for downtown revitalization for, uh, South Church Street. And, uh, we were asked to come back and submit a full application for this project. Uh, and, and Shannon, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but this will be for the burying of electric lines, sidewalks, things of that nature, just improving the area there on South Church Street. And a total of a million-dollar project, five-hundred thousand dollars of that would be a grant. And so, while I don't wanna celebrate just yet because it has not been awarded, typically, when ARC asks you to come back and submit a full application, uh, it's pretty much a done deal at that point.
This right here would be part of our ongoing efforts to try to improve downtown Livingston as we start seeing growth, uh, down at the South Church and South Spring, South Goodpasture Side. This would be, uh, it's, it's ideal. And the ARC has talked about this, is, is try to make South Church, South Spring, uh, almost look as, as their downtown square is. Try to make it as tractable, uh, down those areas as possible. Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, I have one quick question. Um, Mr. Lee, that's fantastic news. Thank you for sharing. When you throw out the one-million-dollar figure for the, you know, project, that's, that's just an estimate, right?
That, that's an estimate for the, you know, we have to split budget for it, yes. And so, five-hundred thousand of that, one million if awarded, would come from the Appalachian Regional Commission. Uh, as far as the timeline is concerned, we would hope, we're, we're, we're gonna submit the grant, uh, by this Friday. And then, in the next couple of months, we will hopefully receive word from the Appalachian Regional Commission that we would be awarded, sign contracts, and then environmental review, which is always fun. And then, I would anticipate, maybe this time next year, we'll be breaking ground and starting construction, if all, if all goes well.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Any more questions for Mr. Lee? Uh, thank you. Sorry. Item number five, uh, police cars, Livingston Police Chief Greg Etheridge. Thank you, Jack. Thank you, Jer.
Hello. Oh, thank you. I'm sorry to have to actually come, uh, especially at late notice to talk to you about this. But, uh, there's good news anyway. But as you know, talking with Tommy about their upper chairman of development that they applied for us for, uh, over three-hundred thousand, that included, uh, eight police vehicles to purchase. So, unfortunately, we have not been able to have the award is done, but the contracts have not been signed as of yet. So, the way, when we applied for the, for the grant was to purchase cars the way we traditionally have since two thousand twelve, which is given from, mostly from the Missouri Highway Patrol. The way the process works with Missouri Highway Patrol, we go on a list. And so, once we, uh, learned of the grant because of the timeline involved, we, we asked them to hold four cruisers for us. So, they've done that and they've been holding them and we've been trying to wait to see when the grant would become available. Unfortunately, the grant contract has not been signed yet. So, my proposal would be, instead of having those four cars back, go back into the Missouri inventory and kinda get on a, a list with them, and we go ahead and purchase those cars from Missouri Highway Patrol using the drug fund to do it. The cost of the, of three of them is twenty-one thousand nine hundred dollars. And it's a eighteen or nineteen model?
Yeah, eighteen.
And the other one is a twenty. Twenty, it's a thousand dollars for me. So, those cars already come in with a lot bar and a sire already installed, which actually saves us a lot of money from that. The other equipment, and there'd be four Dodge Charger, the other equipment will come off the cruisers that we currently have in place. And we would sell those cruisers on gov deals and replenish part of that back into, back into the fund.
I have a question.
Yes.
Um, Chief, what was the total for all the cars?
I believe that the price for the four is eighty-eight thousand six hundred dollars.
And what's the balance in the drug fund?
Roughly a hundred and seventy-something thousand.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And then Greg, will you just pay back the funds to the drug fund?
I can't tell you whether that would happen. I don't believe so. However, I would tell you that five additional cruisers for us was something in play anyway. So, because our fleet has gone down some. So, this will be a way that if, once all this is done, it would be basically twelve cruisers for us. And we shouldn't have to be worried about cars for several years or everything.
Yeah, and, and, and this kinda fixes my problem. Uh, uh, what we looked at was, uh, leasing out the vehicles kinda like we did in the, in the regular city fleet, but it just came back too strong, uh, uh, numbers. It was just too large, uh, for the squad cars. And, uh, so, to stay on this list, uh, with Missouri is very, very important. And, uh, so, but, but as Greg said, not to sound redundant, but as Greg says, our, our, our fleet turnover just really needs to be continuous, so... And we would sell the other ones at, uh, option or gov deals.
So, just to clarify, you're gonna get, if we vote for this, you're gonna do four now, like, out of the drug fund?
Yes, sir.
And then, you'll get eight once the grant comes in?
Yes, sir.
For a total of twelve minutes?
Well, we were for...
Oh, see, that's what I'm saying.
Yes, sir.
Greg?
Yeah, perfect, thanks.
All right, any?
Can I just, 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 just a little quick? I'm sorry. Uh, I said earlier that, that it would not, this, the facilities grant would not pay for these patrol cars. And that is typical for, but you can't typically spend money before a grant contract is signed. However, due to the fact that this has taken a very long time for the state to issue this contract, it might be different. So, I wanna retract what I said earlier, uh, just so there's clarification. It's a possibility, but typically that's not how it works. Sorry.
Thank you, Tommy. Thank you, Chief. Mr. Embry?
Motion made by Alderman, or Vice Mayor Ken Dodson, uh, to, uh, purchase, uh, patrol cars from Missouri Highway Patrol. An amount of, not to say, eighty-eight thousand six hundred dollars. Is that the number, Greg? Eighty-eight-six?
Yes, sir, that's the cost of the vehicles. And then, we would have to, we'll go ship them back.
Yeah, exactly. All right. And, and the shipping, the shipping, is that added into that, Greg?
No, sir. I didn't hear that. Um, Captain Smith and I talked about it and decided that given the cost of fuel and everything going on right now, it'd be more cost-effective time-wise for us to have them brought back, uh, roughly five hundred dollars a car. It's two thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars for the transport of the vehicle back by a transporter company.
All right, we've got a, we've got a motion to, uh, if you wanna amend that for that amount, you've gotta put that in.
And I think the motion also needs to include that the expense will come out of the drug fund.
Yeah, sure. Right. You want to add it?
I will. Yes, I will amend that motion to that total, whatever that total comes out to be.
Eighty-eight thousand six hundred and twenty-eight fifty.
I can't find my calculator.
Are you a mapper?
Not, not in my head. What is twenty-eight fifty?
Should be ninety-one thousand four hundred and fifty.
That is correct. I might have gone ninety-one four fifty. That is how my motion should be made in place.
Okay, and that ninety-one four fifty will be coming out of the direct fund. So, we got a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, uh, Alderman Coleman, in discussion. Roll call, will Miss Phillips?
Alderman Coleman?
Yes.
Alderman Devon?
Yes.
Asmae Watson?
Yes.
Alderman Luffler?
Yes.
Alderman Clough?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item number six, item number six is garage, or, excuse me, not garage, garbage and, uh, storage containers. Uh, where you gonna start? You wanna start your own?
Yeah, I'm happy to take this.
All right, go ahead.
Basically, I have been noticing some scenes that are depicted here on, in this photograph. Um, start with the top right corner. This is a multifamily apartment complex, garbage receptacle area at the time when the trash cans are full, basically. Um, then the lower left corner photograph is a scene once the garbage truck has run and the receptacles have been emptied. Um, now, to the right, those two photographs to the right in the bottom is also a multifamily apartment complex on Lee Drive. And I, I, I just point this out just to, to show the comparison between the container. Um, it's a lid, you know, it has a lid. It's marked with the address, um, the unit number for the apartment, et cetera. So, basically, I came back to the mayor and I said, "Do we have, in our, in our miscellaneous ordinances, property maintenance ordinances, anything related to multifamily, um, dwellings in terms of trash receptacle areas or standards, whatever?" And we couldn't find it. So, we've gone to MTS and asked them to kinda help us guide, uh, guide us on some, some good, coming up with some good property maintenance codes to help with. So, that's where we are. Um, I think, you know, we've, we've done so much good here in the community and I think we can do better than this. Um, so, I'm kinda showing the good and the, and the ugly. Um, and, and it just so happens that I'm not, you know, I'm not showing these photographs to pick on any, any particular multifamily dwelling. But right across the street from what you see in the upper right corner is the Livingston Housing Authority. And they should be committed. I, I think they should win the beautification award frankly because they're doing a bang-up job of transforming an entire neighborhood. I mean, they're painting those units, they're putting shutters on. They also, I failed to get this photograph, but they also have that same type of trash receptacle for each unit in the housing authority. Um, you know, they're holding their residents accountable for making certain that their trash is maintained in an organized way. You know, I just think this is unsightly. And to anyone in our community that sees that that may be visiting, I think we can do better in town. So, you know, I challenge us to come up with something. And then, the top left corner photograph is a dwelling that for four years since I've been on this committee, I've been trying to get something done about that. It's basically, it should be treated in our swamp clearance code, but I think it's been stuck in a tax. John Menace can, yeah, front page, tax, whatever, and I, and I put this in here just to ask Menace to get us a mandate on, on that property, please.
Okay. I, John, fir- first, let's take the first item first, and, and we had talked to, uh Alderman Coleman, asking me to reach out to Ms. Ashburn, UT, MTS. And uh I, I think that the board here in, in their packet that was handed out, you can see uh the conversations that we have had back and forth. Uh and so, John, I, did you come up with anything after you were CC'd on all that?
Well, I, I, I just struck my attention last week, I met with him on Thursday, discussing things. Since then, I, you know, I didn't look through our municipal codes, and we don't have top seventeen's reserved for future use. But I, I have pulled some samples of uh those ordinances from some other cities that, that also includes a section on containers, requiring lids to be on containers and them to be properly secured, things of that nature. And I can get a draft of those of a couple of different cities that have enacted those ordinances and let the board take a look at it, we may even have a work session on it at some point. Uh and I spoke with Tommy Lee this afternoon also about this issue and the concerns. And there are provisions in our zoning ordinances now that require multi-family dwellings for those trash containers to be in a screened-in area. The issue that I can't answer right now is I don't know if these particular dwellings would have been grandfathered in before these zoning orders, before that was added to the zoning orders. So, that's something to look into as well. But those pictures there on the right, if, if though, if that's, if the condition of the property stays that way, then obviously they're, they're, you know, down in violation of our, our law ordinance in thirteen, section thirteen dash one oh two. Uh but, you know, until we enact something that specifically regulates containers and, you know, and being secure in, with lids, I, you know, that's, that's all we can do at this point.
And, and also, uh John, we, we've had some complaints about storage containers and.
I'm looking into that as well, this is about the large historic units that are, are a part of different lots, so I'm, I'm also looking into that, see how we can regulate that as well.
Okay, now, if you're familiar, it, it is the, the big low-key storage units that we get, and also eighteen wheeler trailers that are starting to pop up on Main Street, so. Yeah, but thank you, thank you. Now, uh I think Alderman Coleman had a question for you about the property.
Now, this house here, I'm not sure which one that is, Alderman Coleman. Now, there was a property or two that was in violation of our, our property maintenance regulations. And there was some of those properties, and I'm not sure if this is one or not, but there were some of those properties that were, uh there was a tax sale pending.
That's it.
Uh Mr. Myers, Chris Myers, did, was the, the, the delightful tax attorney for, for the county for, for some time. And Mr. Savage is taking it over, and I'll, I'll get with him on the stats of those, we've always sort of piggybacked off of the county whenever they did those. And uh there, there was a delay, and, and also, the, the COVID sort of put a halt on all tax sales, you know, for that period. So, I know there is a delay in getting those done, but I think some of those have started back. And then, there was one in particular, and I'm not sure if that's the one, and I don't have the address with me, but there was one in particular that was on the list of properties to be sold.
Yes, sir.
So, we had, we had a discussion before about, does it make a lot of sense for the city to incur the expense to go in there and, and tear it down and those things? If that property is squirming around, be sold at a tax sale, so. But I'd be glad to look into that, get you another day.
That'd be great, I'll give you good advice, I'll give you good advice.
Yes, and, yeah, John, if you could, in the next two or three weeks, if you can get some sample ordinances out here, and then we'll figure out, we'll have a work session for next city council meeting.
Okay.
And have a discussion. I, I do want to uh say, as Wayne Peat, which is our sanitation supervisor, has reminded me, uh the garbage cans that you do see in the lower right, now, our, we do not have the automated trucks, okay? So, our, our folks have to open the lid and get the garbage that is in a bag out and, and put it there. Those are real, real nice uh cans, and I like them, and I hope one day that we can go to the automated uh sanitation truck that has the arm with the hook and, and it flips it over, but that, that's what those cans are, and we're not quite ready for that. Although, if we had them, we could, with our garbage uh sanitation workers, would get the garbage out by bag and throw it in the back of the hopper, I just wanted to clear that, okay?
I noticed in some of the stuff that Ms. Ashburn sent us, I mean, they even had details about, you know, you cannot have bags of garbage sitting on top of a can. You know, it all has to be in a container with a lid. Um I don't, I, it may be just me, but I see trash cans, even empty trash cans, laying all over the lines. I mean, out by the street after the pickup, and they just stay there, it's like they're permanent home for some residents, and I just think it's unsightly.
I agree, and I, I think, I think we can do something, um.
Make one.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Menace, thank you, Mr. Coleman. Okay, have uh no other business. So, I'll entertain a, all right, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Salute.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Dodson, second. Second, uh, we'll get all the favor of those saying aye.
Aye.
All votes, I'm saying.